This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, I'll make a motion to open the meeting. This is June 22nd, meeting of the Village of Pittsburgh Planning Board.
Second.
How do you vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, let's let the record show. Justin Bleedster is online, Justin Lightgibb is here, Joanne Shannon is here, and Susan Loda is here.
And I think just as a-
Those are our attendees.
I think just a reminder, Mindy was saying that we should mention who is speaking, so for the record, Justin Bleedster made the motion to begin the meeting, and Susan Loda seconded it.
And the vote was unanimous amongst us four. So David Marshall said he will not be joining us tonight because he's on vacation. So good for him. And we're hoping this would be a fairly short meeting anyway, with no real substantial discussion. We'll probably get into more meat of it at our next meeting, was my assumption. So.
Yeah, I actually have a suggestion. Here is, did everyone get a copy, by the way?
Yes.
Well-
The hard copy?
Yep. So there are recommendations in it. And I think if the Active Transportation Board had come before us, what we would be trying to evaluate is not the state of affairs, which they've, you know, mapped out, you know, in a very complete outdated way. But we would be asking about their recommendations, because those plans, I think, are what we need to evaluate in terms of the LWRP. So I think, and I think kind of slicing it like that, going to, and I can't tell what page this is. Just again, it says recommendations. The page numbers are cut off. But I think if we start there, like, that's what they want to do. That's what, you know, those are the, you know, potential changes that would be made. And it's those changes, I think, that that's in our purview. You know, how do those recommendations, how do those, you know, those projects, how do they fit in with the LWRP? So that would be my suggestion as I was going through this. You know, it's frustratingly out of date, but I think the recommendations are what I see as kind of where we might, where we might focus.
Okay, I believe that our pages 75 to 84. I had a few notes of what sections are probably most relevant. There's a bunch of background. And unfortunately, a lot of village and town stuff seems to be mixed together, and it's not like necessarily clearly distinguished. There are some town-only sections and some village-only sections, and then there's a lot that sort of sum up both. And so I think that could be an approach that would not, that would be some of the improvements. That doesn't necessarily capture the background. My initial leaning to this was just to kind of go through this in order, when initially skipping over the obvious town sections, but that was my leaning. I'm sure there's different ways of doing it. If you want to jump right into the meat of it, and then go back and look at some of it. But I guess before jumping into that, first problem is the printout I have was dated January 2019, and this is different than the version of the document Renee emailed us two months ago.
I was using the version that is on the town website, which is the 2018 document still, and then looking at the amendment from 2019.
Yeah, me too.
So the printout I got has January 2019 printed on it.
Does it reflect the amendments?
I have no idea. I have the amendments here, but I don't know. And then the other thing is, I started going through this, this is clearly out of date, at least the earlier sections of the document, because it's based on our old code and our old comprehensive plan, and the town's old comprehensive plan. It hasn't been updated for either of that. So I mean, I was, we can, we can go through some of this, but that's kind of a problem, is we don't know what the current document is, and at least some versions seem to be obsolete. So it would be nice to be able to get all of the revisions in there and have it updated to reflect the current state of affairs. But I got the impression they didn't have any funding to do this. I did email Renee and Bob a week or two ago suggesting that, hey, maybe someone can get a copy of this document and hand it off to one of the town's planners, the town has staff, like Doug Daru, their Director of Planning. I mean, that's what he does, is edit documents. So I would think it would not be a big deal for someone like him to go through and update this, but that's just me thinking.
I thought it was a problem with the, with Steinmetz. Like, this is another, another, you know, template. It's not a Word document, so it's a bear to edit. And maybe there was a budgetary problem that was, you know, preventing a lot of, a lot of updates. But, so what are we tasked with? Are we tasked with, you know, updating this document? Or, I don't know, I don't think that's on us. I think what we need to do is, what I said, look at their recommendations and see if those are, how those work with the LWRP. But, because updating this document is, I mean, we're not the committee to do that. This isn't our, this isn't our document. We can point out things.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I mean, our job is to rewrite the document. My suggestion was that they get us the current, you know, incorporate all their updates and get us the document to look at. But I guess that's not our call, but I don't know where this is going right now, in terms of, I guess they're asking us to look at it. But what our job is, and our role is, I guess there's two things. One, doing the LWRP review. And then, two, submitting any general comments on content and the recommendations that we think seem reasonable. I think those are two things for us to do. We haven't been charged with anything right now, other than saying, hey, take a look at it. I think was about the one-sentence directive that we've had so far. But we know we will be doing the LWRP review. And what we heard from Alyssa last week was that she thought that time was of the essence, and this was to be adopted pretty quickly. I don't know, I haven't been, heard anything from Bob or Renee about what their schedule is.
Why do I have mid-July in my head? As-
There was an email from Renee that said they'd formally forward it to us in mid-July. But then the question becomes, what will they forward to us? Will that be a document that has these out-of-date sections? And, I mean, this is stuff they could work on while we're going through this. So they can work on updating it to reflect the comp plan, the zoning code, and stuff like that.
So it's like, there is some frustration that Susan expressed, and Justin, it sounds like you'd very much like to have an updated copy as well. And that was my impression too, as I was going through it, through that. It is frustrating that we're still referencing old code. Things that happened before the comp plan was adopted. And I also think it would be really nice to have that. The document was written in Adobe InDesign, and, you know, the town could buy a subscription to allow them to use that for $10 a month. So that doesn't really seem like a blocker to be able to, to apply those updates. Just have to have somebody that's going to do it.
Yeah, I'm sure they have people that can edit documents. Like, I mean, their planners have got to be working, and marketing, they have advertising and marketing and whatever else that they have going on. And they actually have staff that are supposed to do that. So I gotta think they have some people that can do this type of thing.
So since we haven't had a formal referral yet, it sounds like most of what we're tasked with is in relationship with the LWRP. Is there a blocker in that it references the old code? You know, the old chapter 210 that has things like R5 and, or, you know, the R districts and the old names?
I don't know. I don't know if that's a blocker. It's a problem. I don't know if it would actually create, you know, a, you know, create something that'd be problematic for the village, other than it's just not useful to be referencing and talking about something that doesn't exist.
Right. Is there a way that we can, you know, before getting the formal referral, just put this note out there saying that, hey, this references old code, and we'd appreciate somebody updating those sections? I mean, I'd be willing to help out as well, to point to the right code sections, but it just seems like that's pretty simple stuff. If somebody could give us the copy of the InDesign, you know, we could probably do that in a couple hours.
Yeah. Exactly. That's what I thought. If a lot of this stuff in a few hours of work, someone that knew what they were doing could go through and make some pretty quick updates on the cheap. And I'm not volunteering, because we're not on the committee that's doing it. So, so far, comments are updated, and get the, get it to reflect current codes and comprehensive plan. And we want to identify what the current version of the document is. The other thing I noted is we're missing parts of the document, or we're missing all the appendices. At least I haven't received them yet.
Hello, I just wanted to introduce myself. My name's Joe Rapier. I'm a local Realtor at Mitchell Pearson's office. And I'm actually finishing my bachelor's degree online at Georgetown. So we were asked to attend a professional webinar tonight. I thought this would be a good place to start. I'm also a Pittsburgh resident, so thanks for letting me be here.
Okay, welcome. I'm Justin Bleedster. I'm the chairman of the planning board, and there's three other members of the planning board here. This is just a workshop meeting where we're, what we're, topic of discussion is we're talking about a draft active transportation plan that we're going to be reviewing, which is a 99-page document that is basically summarizing future transportation options for the Village of Pittsburgh and the Town of Pittsburgh. And I think as it states in this document, active transportation is pedestrian-powered, people-powered transportation. So this is looking at bicycles and walkers, and anything but cars, for the most part. And so the document is talking about trails, road safety to make it more pedestrian-friendly, road safety to make it more bicycle-friendly, new bicycle trails, and so on. So right now, we're just getting into this. I haven't read the entire document yet. So we're just having a brief background discussion here, where we're talking about what we're doing with the document, how we're going to review it. So it's not going to be a most intensely thrilling meeting that you've joined, but you did in fact join a meeting, and we always welcome people to attend. So thank you for attending. If you have any comments, by all means.
Yeah, absolutely. I was probably going to present to my class, I actually have a client who's interested in a village property on Monrel, and just kind of the ins and outs of tearing, not tearing it down, but what you could do to the structure and what you can't, and why. I know that's probably a bit of a long, longer conversation, and I don't want to bother you guys with that, but.
You want to call the village office and have a conversation with the building inspector? He can go over all the ins and outs of our zoning code and application process and so on. But if you're in the village and the town, there are different processes. So I encourage you to talk to the village building inspector to get a good introduction.
Good. Oh, good. That's, that's good to hear. But yeah, I just want to say I'm going to observe and let you guys do your thing. And if I leave without saying goodbye, please don't be offended. I'll just take some notes and report back to my class.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So, so anyway, what we're getting at is issues with the documents. So what version, no appendices, and updates are needed for comp plan and code. So I think we, as Justin Leek said, I think we should send these kind of notes out immediately, so someone can start working on that. And per Susan's comment earlier, I think the recommendation section is the least likely to change.
Yeah, I think as I was going through it, I would agree that that seems the least likely to change. It does, the changes that do seem like it might happen are some of the things that have already occurred, like the speed limit change in the village and that sort of thing. And maybe with the connective trail in the park, in the Northwest quadrant. Not a big deal.
The other comment I would have to say is, some of the physical changes they're looking to make in that section, again, this is mostly pages, I think, 75 to 84 of the document. A lot of the changes they're looking to physically make to roads in the village, I know the LWRP has a section that talks about that, of where, it was specific things of where stoplights should be installed, where crosswalks should be installed, road treatments, and so on. And so with that review, I think identifying the differences in what LWRP says and what this says would be kind of a key thing.
Right.
Yeah, you know, overall, the recommendations, and as I was skimming the document, it seems like a lot of people have put a lot of thought into this already. And it seems like the recommendations are mostly in line. You know, I'm far from an expert on this area. I went to a training that was offered through the Reconnect Rochester Group, and in conjunction with the Buffalo Group that Renee had publicized a while ago on Complete Streets. That was a couple of weeks ago, and that was a great session. And it seems like a lot of the stuff they were talking about is what they're doing in the plan.
So, meaning like narrowing the travel lanes on the roads, putting in wider bicycle lanes, putting pedestrian-friendly things like stopping medians in the middle of the road, so pedestrians can stop there while crossing the road. Those are a bunch of things that have been under discussion.
Right, right. So, you know, it generally seems positive and aligned with parts of the LWRP and the code that I've seen. So I guess, you know, compared to looking at the zoning code, this seems a lot less intimidating and a lot less likely to raise issues.
Okay. So do you want to start next week and go through that section? Is that a yes?
Is that 75 to 84, you're saying?
Yeah, but then there, let me see there. And then there's... Okay, so first of all, there's only a couple sections I noted that really are town-specific. And I'll do, I can note those down if you want to write those down. It was page 49 to 57. And then 67 to 74.
That's helpful. Thanks, Justin.
And then the beginning section, I had 1 through 37 was mostly introduction. That covered, oh, here's what we've looked at when developing this plan. Here's what our existing code is. Here is our existing conditions of our trail system. Here's existing conditions of our sidewalk system, and so on. Then the recommendations started on page 60. So let's just make a tentative plan for next week. Here's my suggestion. Let's just go through the last 20 pages of the document. So 75 through 96.
Okay.
And here, my thinking is, we can first go through and just generally discuss it and share our comments and flag items we need to follow up on. And then I think a subsequent discussion is how does it comply to the LWRP? I don't know if we have to do both in the same night.
Yeah, I think those sound reasonable as the questions that we need to answer. I guess we can also look at things like impact on village businesses. You know, I think that this is from a health and transportation standpoint, and I'm not sure how much of the document relates to, you know, pros or cons to village businesses. I'm sure Susan has some ideas on that, too.
Yep, some, some do.
Well, it can affect tourism, which will help business quite a bit.
Yep.
Go ahead, Justin.
Oh, I was just saying, you know, I'm sure that there are pros and cons in terms of the amount of traffic and people actually walking in front of businesses. It seems like it's mostly probably a positive thing, but just want to keep an eye out for that.
Okay, so, but, so going back to what I just mentioned, looking at the last 20 pages, my notes were of this active transportation plan, pages 75 to 84, or the changes the village was going to make. And then pages 85 to 96 talked at length about redesigning our roads to be more friendly to support active transportation. That was a narrowing the road width, that was improving crosswalks, that was doing other things like that. So I think those are good things to look at, and those are, as Susan and Lake said, those are the more concrete things in here. Not likely to change a whole lot. So my thought is, let's go in and plan to discuss that next week, and we'll come up with a list of general thoughts and comments on that, kind of like we did before. And we may come up with some action items for us to research, or questions to ask of others based on that.
Well, and maybe we can schedule a meeting, maybe in another week, where we look at the LWRP? Is that what you're thinking?
We can do, yeah, I mean, we have a bunch of things to go over. We could, if we want to do our narrowest review necessary, I would say it's going over those sections, and then talking about how it complies with the LWRP.
Right.
To Mr. Napier, the LWRP is our local waterfront protection plan, and it's our waterfront development standards that were, that were adopted, I don't know, 15 years ago, or something like that. So what we're tasked to do is take a look at this draft active transportation plan, see how it conforms with some of our other plans, such as our waterfront development plan in particular. See if there's any conflicting directives in those, and sort that out. One of the things we're doing.
The active transport plan?
Active transportation plan is what we're currently looking at.
And that was- Oh, sorry, my question was just, who developed that? I wasn't following. Was that village residents, like, got together and planned that? Or was that the state came and looked at it, and that's what they recommended?
This plan was developed by a committee of village residents and town residents, Town of Pittsburgh residents. So the village and town are two separate governments. But the village is in the town. So the village can get involved in town matters, but we have separate, we have separate governments. So a committee was formed, I don't know when this was, 2017, 2016. They had a consultant of professional planners, consultant of some traffic professionals, and this was funded by a grant, some grant money from New York State. So New York State paid for the consultants, and the consultants wrote up this 96-page document of recommendations. And they worked along with the committee members. And they had a couple public hearings where sections of the document were revealed to the public, and the public generated a bunch of comments, and then that was rolled into this document as well. So it's been a public process, and it's been going on for quite a while.
Ingalls Planning and Design, by the way, it looks like, it's a consultant.
And so now you guys have to make sense of it, and see if it actually helps the village versus just people from the outside.
Yeah, I guess you could say that. We're looking it over, and we'll be coming up with some recommendations. We've been out of the loop. I haven't read the doc, I've only read parts of the document, so we're getting fresh eyes on it. And we're doing it from our own perspective. We're actually charged with portion of the review of this. So when you have a land use policy document like this, where it's actually setting future policy for the community, it needs to be formally adopted, and there's a whole process to the adoption. So looking, so one part of that is an environmental review, understanding how it impacts the environment. And environment is not just air and water, but it's things like traffic and community character and stuff like that. There's a whole bunch of things. So other part of the review is looking how it complies with some of our existing plans. We have a comprehensive plan, we have our zoning code, and we have our waterfront development plan. And so we're going to be looking at some of those matters. And if we find concerns, we'll send them along to the community that wrote this, and then we'll see what they want to do about it.
I'm glad you guys are looking into these things. I live, I grew up on Sutherland Street, so it's always nice to see.
So you can have a comment of build more sidewalks on Sutherland Street, right?
Well, yeah, fix the cracks. I don't want to be falling off my bike.
Yeah, and Joe, throughout this process, there's been a lot of debate with the fire department and the Department of Transportation have been quite a challenge to deal with, and we haven't dealt with that, but others have. The fire department wants wide, open streets that they can speed down, drive any direction they want to, and get around stopped cars and stuff like that. And then the highway department wants to move traffic through. And generally, village residents have a different perspective, and they don't care if the cars get smoothly through. Just slow them down so the pedestrians can get through, and so on. So we're kind of at odds of, with some of these other agencies, of efficiently getting vehicles through versus optimizing things for residents and pedestrians and bicycles. So unfortunately, the vehicles tend to win.
Sure. And is that kind of where, I know they're talking about that apartment complex next to the canal for many years now. Is that, do you guys interface with that a little bit, too? If a big apartment building wants to move in, and the highway department doesn't like it, but maybe village owners, business owners like it because of the more people?
I think that's the best, that's a topic best left for another day. This board does review all significant development projects in the village, where the primary board that looks over, well, there's two boards that split the bulk of the review. We have an architectural board, and we have a planning board. So the planning board looks at how it impacts other properties of anything going in, whether it's an addition or a hotel, residential addition or a hotel. And the architectural board looks at how it fits with our historic character and the building's historic value. So if you're putting on an addition, and you have nice wooden clapboards, and you're proposing putting plastic bricks on your addition, they would probably say, no, you don't want plastic bricks put up wood clapboards.
Very good. We appreciate that, then.
All right. So I'd like to move on, take a little bit of time to give you some background here for your benefit. But we need to wrap up our business here. So other members of the board, that's, it sounds like the plan for now- So, um, other members of the board, um, that's, it sounds like the plan for now is to start with going through 75 to 96. And our meeting next Monday at 6:00 PM. Um, capturing comments on that, coming up with some task lists. And then we'll, um, the following meeting, we'll kind of take, start taking a look at the LWRP and how it impacts it. We may add on some other assignments and other sections to look at. Now, has anyone actually read the whole document yet?
Lightly.
I skimmed it.
Yeah, yeah.
Hey, Susan, you've read most of it?
Yeah.
Oh, very good. I've skimmed the document and I've read some sections, but I'm a long way from understanding the full document.
Justin, as far as action items, did you want to write the email, um, regarding the updated copy? And the other things we mentioned, um, uh, which were the appendices that are missing and, uh, the version that we should be looking at?
Yeah, I'll send a note out to that and I can copy everybody, send a copy to everybody. I don't know who to send it to, but, um, I guess Dorothea, Bob, Renee.
Renee would be helpful.
Okay, um, anything, anyone else have anything to add?
Do we need to ask them to formally send us something or is that automatically going to happen in July?
Um, discussion we had, it sounded like that was to happen on mid-July at their next regular meeting. I don't know if they have any meetings between now and then. Um, discussions I think we had before is we want some time to start going through this before the automatic deadlines kick in. Trying to assist us to review it. Uh, I think it's safe to say we don't want the situation we had last summer, a meeting twice a week all summer long to go through stuff in, um, rapid fashion. But, uh, this isn't going to be as big a review as what we looked at last summer.
Um, is there any sense in, in talking about what our approach should be if they say that no updates are forthcoming? And they're just going to go through with the 2018 draft and the 2019 addendum? Do we just go with it?
Well, we could either go with it or we could say, well, we've been submitted as incomplete. It's based on outdated documents and ask them to fix it. And then they either fix it or they do what they did last time and adopt it anyway.
Right.
At least that's my thought as to what we do. I, I know there's funding concerns and whether they fix some of these matters.
Right.
Yeah, I, I think that maybe you, the only other, tho- those do seem like the two options. The only other one that I can think of is, um, uh, you know, we can offer, uh, personally, I'd be willing to look at some of the code updates since we've gone through that recently and it shouldn't take that long to do it. So if they can get us a, a document, um, it might not be that bad just to update some of the obvious things that seem like they should be done and then send it back the draft. So.
Instead of, instead of asking them or pointing out that these things are outdated and, um, asking them to address it, instead telling them it's outdated and sending them a list of suggested changes that they can use, turning point and modify it.
Well, yes, uh, and also I'd, I'd be willing to update some of the obvious things that we see as well. If, if they can just say, okay, you know, you've got the draft for the next two weeks. We're not going to make any changes to it. Um, we'll consider whatever you send to us in, in design format. And then assuming that's better, that becomes the, the draft. So volunteer to help.
Okay.
They should love that. I, I think that's a great, uh, very generous, uh, offer, Justin. That committee should really, you know, jump on that.
Well, if we can, you know, if it doesn't take that long and, uh, we can all move things forward. I, I think that, you know, we can meet them halfway and say, hey, we'd like this done, but also we can do some of it.
And we could have a meeting and members of their committee could join in the meeting. And we could just have a live session of bring up the document and let's make some changes to it.
Right. I've, I've already got a copy of InDesign in my subscription, I think, to Adobe, so.
Yeah, I, I don't have any Adobe software. I just use Microsoft Word. And I think most, uh, pretty much everybody else on their committee and everyone else on this board, um, doesn't have the, that software. But you do, you use it with all your video editing and so on?
I, I use Premiere with the video. Um, no, I just use Premiere with some of the video editing and Acrobat Professional. I've really done very little in InDesign, but I'm hoping I can bumble through enough of it to change some text.
Okay.
I have confidence.
Thank you. I'll see.
All right. Well, it sounds like, um, that'll be the other part of the letter is obtain the document, the actual, um, InDesign document.
Yep, that'd be great.
So obtain the document. We may make changes and send it to them. And you said in particular, our zoning code? And maybe cop plan?
Yep. And, you know, while we're at it, honestly, the, uh, addendum is very straightforward. Most of it is just text changes. So that's probably a matter of half an hour to get, you know, the addendum done for 75% of it.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't think it was a big deal to update it for all the stuff in the addendums, which is why I'm surprised it's been sitting around for over a year.
Yeah.
Okay, any, anyone else have anything to suggest?
You're gonna, you're gonna add the LWRP plan? It's not in the, it's not in here with all the other plans. Susan mentioned that last week.
Yeah, I noticed that too. Um, where was that? Yeah, it's starting on page seven, starting on page seven.
Page seven and eight, yeah.
The LWRP is missing. A cop plan is obsolete. It has all the Erie Canal master plan, which is obsolete. Um, and I had noticed there's a few other plans that are missing from that list. So that was supposedly lifting the plans that were part of this. I'm kind of concerned about them not really looking at the LWRP. Uh, maybe we won't find too many conflicts, but it seems like that should have been something that they looked over with the consultants and factored that in rather than us looking at it after the fact. But, um, as Justin said, there may not be a lot of big conflicts because there's a lot of common sense that went into that and a lot of common sense that's going into this document. Okay, well, it sounds like we have a, an action plan then for next week. And then next week we'll develop one for the following meeting. Uh, are we still on schedule to meet every other week for the immediate future?
That's fine with me.
Sure.
Or every week, right?
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, if people wanted to meet more frequently, right? Because we heard there is a sense of urgency to this.
That's fine with me. Every week is fine.
Okay. Um, so I'll just share what my gut feel was of an effort to at least thoroughly go through this. Whether we thoroughly go through it or not is another debate. But, um, I was thinking that it was likely to take three to four meetings to get through the document. And then if we have, uh, it could take a couple more meetings if we have some recommendations we want to write up and we have to go through the, uh, documents, uh, for that. So I could see this turning into a six-meeting project to go through it thoroughly. But if we don't end up making a lot of recommendations or we don't want to go through the town sections or we don't want to go through the background, then that could be pared down. So.
I mean, uh, as I said at the beginning, I don't, you know, this is the committee's, uh, baby in a sense, and I think, um, they should be the ones, you know, to take our recommendations about updating it. And Justin's going to help them with that, so that's great. But I don't think it's really up to us to, you know, kind of review all the background. We can make some, we can make some general comments like, you know, update this and add the right, add the, add the right, uh, doc, um, documents that this should refer to. But I think beyond that, I think it's fairly narrow. I think we look at the recommendations because that is what, you know, planning looks at, what the proposal is for change. So that's, that's where I'm coming from. So I don't see it as six meetings necessarily, but I think we can do a lot next week. Um, I think a joint meeting makes a lot of sense, you know, to go through updates. Um, but I, I don't know that, you know, when, you know what thorough reviews are and those take a long time. And I just think this isn't our, this isn't our task, but that's me.
Okay, we'll keep talking about it.
Yeah, I think that we may not need to make a, a plan for everything right now. I think we can take the next week as it comes and, and start to look through it. Um, my impression of the first sections is that I don't find them to be that controversial. I mean, they're talking about, um, what you call an accident versus a crash, national statistics. Um, I don't have any problem with any of those. I, I trust the consultants and the people who have already put time into that, so.
Yeah, so I think I'd, I'd somewhat agree with Susan and Mr. Linky up there in that, um, uh, well, I think it's worth going through it and maybe discussing it amongst ourselves, but I don't think we're going to come up with a long list of changes or suggestions. We may have a few comments, but, um, like I was looking at the town's hiking trail section and my comment is, what? Is this a, you, can't you do better than this? Um, but I'm not sure the town is likely to be very concerned about my opinion in that regard. So, but that, that was just my thoughts, so.
Well, you know, Justin, this is going to be presented to the public. Um, so I think, you know, that would be a great comment to, to make, but in, in public. So maybe it would, you know, have some traction.
Yeah, and maybe that's the proper avenue for it. Um, but, um, and opinions about what we'd like to see may not be as important as, um, no, I don't know. I don't have, um, uh, I guess I haven't had, uh, figured that sentence out, so. Um, all right, well, we'll, we'll work on this as we go. It sounds like there's some agreement that on the background stuff, we're not going to be driving, um, significant change with that. And how much we look into that, I guess, can be a future debate. I can't weigh in on that until I've read it.
Right. So, yeah, we'll, we'll take a reading this week.
Okay. All right, well, that's all I have. Um, other than, there is a couple of general announcements. I emailed a few things around. It sounds like the farmer's market application, um, we're supposed to possibly review the farmer's market. Sounded like that's been handled administratively, just like Holiday Hots was. Um, and, um, other than that, I haven't heard much new stuff going on. Um, I don't know if anyone else is aware of any new matters that have, uh, been acted on recently.
No.
No, the, the only other thing that's, uh, maybe of some interest to this group is that the, um, the town has been discussing the timeline for their code updates. And apparently they're, uh, they intend to begin working with, uh, John Steinmetz and, and their group on, on doing that. So, um, I just happened to hear that at the last, uh, the last town board meeting, in case anyone's interested.
That's interesting. That Steinmetz is working with them.
It sounds like it. I don't know if they've signed a contract yet, but that sounded like the intention.
Sounds like they're getting a good business doing that. I think they rewrote Churchville's code recently. They've worked, rewrote the village's code. If they're working on the town's code, that sounds, um, sounds like the business they're in. Okay, um, with that, and if anyone has anything else, I'm just going to make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Um, and our next meeting will be next Monday. Uh, that would be June 29th. And then we'll have a subsequent meeting July 6th. And most likely every Monday through July or portion of July. And, uh, we'll work that out as it goes. But at least that's the next two meeting dates, uh, June 29th and July 6th at 6:00 PM. Is everyone good to 6:00 PM?
Yes.
Yep.
That works.
Okay. All right, thanks, everybody. I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Second. Joanna. Hi.
Hi.
Have a good weekend. Yeah. Good night, everybody. Have a good week.
Thanks for coming.
Good night. Bye.